County School District is now convened in its workshop meeting. Thank you for taking the time to join us and for your interest in the operation of the Dubal County School District. For those viewers watching online, we apologize for starting a few minutes late. There were multiple trains that were stopped in the area, um, and so we had to hold uh so we could get everybody in the room together. So we're starting now. That being said, I'm going to turn it to Dr. Green for our presentations for today.
Thank you Chairwoman Coker. We will start with internet safety for children. We have Detective Brett Bolton and he will introduce hi- his partner as they go through this presentation. His presentation was requested by Board Member Carney uh from a meeting with JSO. And so today, all of our presentations will be about technology.
Okay.
And dear great cubes.
Alright, thank you. As was mentioned, my name is Detective Brett Bolton. I work with Jacksonville Sheriff's Office. My primary function there is as a digital forensic examiner. Joining me is Sergeant Waddell, who is the sergeant over the unit. My position is kind of unique because I uh I'm focused on one type of crime and that's crimes against children. So unfortunately, a lot of the stuff that I have to do every day can be quite challenging in that there is a a growing subset of our population that gets sexual gratification from watching, creating and trading videos and pictures of things being done to children that you can only imagine in in your worst nightmares, right? So that's the stuff that we do every day. With that being said, um, a lot of the stuff that I'm going to be presenting to you today is kind of a culmination of materials that I've generated or sourced from the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children, or NICMCC as I'll refer to them throughout the rest of the presentation. And then some of it is going to be material that that I've added based on my own personal experiences and professional training and experiences as well. So there are a ton of risks that actually affect our children daily as they access the internet. And some of the stuff that's up on the slide right now can be downright frightening for a parent. But it is definitely important that we have these conversations because just just because we may not think that or may not know about them or think that they're not going to happen to our child, tho- those thoughts are not gonna be are not gonna be what stops our children from becoming victims, right? It's only gonna be through active communication and and taking proactive initiatives that is going to protect our children, right? So um, there's some stuff up here that may seem less likely than others. For example, slavery, when I'm talking about slavery here, most uh I'm generally talking about a child sex trafficking. And while yes, it is less likely that a child is going to be wind up as a sex slave than they are to be involved in say cyberbullying or sexting. Those risks are there, right? These are risks that our children are facing every single day, and I think it's important that we recognize that. So kind of start starting at the top of the list is inappropriate content. So inappropriate content is interesting because it's not necessarily a matter of if our children are going to be exposed to this material. It's a matter of when, right? If we get if we have access to the internet, whether you're a child or an adult, eventually you're gonna run across something that is either inappropriate or unwanted. It's it's just gonna show up, right? So it's important that we as parents and guardians and mentors have this have the strategies and resources put in place to guide our children through the proper actions when they come across this type of material, right? So things like pornography and excess excessive violence, it can have a very negative impact on the development of our children, right? These types of experiences and especially continued exposure to these types of things can have a very negative impact on the way children think, the way they feel, and then obviously the way they behave. So one thing that I do want to point out too is that a lot of the things that we're gonna talk about today, we may be able to think back upon our own childhood or or think about things that we saw in pop culture during our childhood and try to relate them to things that the kids are seeing now. But we gotta remember that a lot of that stuff is a lot different, right? And I'm gonna use pornography as an example here because like think about uh old TV shows where you have like a teenager that's got some smut magazine hidden underneath underneath his bed, hiding from his parents, right? That's not the content that our kids have access to. At a click of a button, kids could be watching videos depicting hardcore sexual content that um that are showing very graphic and different types of simulated scenarios, right? And unfortunately, there's a lot of different scenarios that that we as as an older generation may think were as as wrong and or as inherently wrong, but they're showing these things to um to our kids and everybody else as consumers to this stuff, right? And the stuff that I'm talking about is scenarios that involve between uh involve sex scenes between simulated like brother and sister, between sist- uh like teacher and student, even teenagers. There's certain pornography sites that that um kinda simulate young children involved with older people, incest, um and group sex type stuff. All this stuff is being put forth on these pornography sites and it's there for our children to view it, right? And a lot of times, there's no age verification, right? We'll kind of get into that a little bit more in just a second. One thing I I do want to back up, uh I do want to point out too that again, like I said, that down towards the lower end of this list, we do have uh it we reduce some likelihood, right? But we need to understand that this is kind of a a a growing scale or um that these items can can kind of build upon each other. So if we say fail to uh to have the appropriate reactions or appropriate conversations with our children after they've been exposed to something like sexual content from either a peer or something they see online, they can easily move down this list and engage in more risky behaviors. If they don't feel like they have somebody that they can talk to about it and they try and handle those problems by themselves. Alright, so sexual content or inappropriate content in general, um it really can come from anywhere on the internet. If you have access to the internet, you can you can get to it, right? I know that you guys probably have some uh some filters in place, content filters in place that limit the kids' access to certain things, but there's almost always ways around that, right? And kids are pretty clever. But I'd say by and large, the majority of my experience, I see kids getting into this inappropriate content through some sort of app on their mobile device, right? So I've kind of grouped these apps into different categories. And you'll see that like the dating apps there at the end, like that it it's pretty self-evident as to why a child shouldn't have a dating app like like Whisper, Badu or Grindr on their uh on their phone, right? But when what may not be so self-evident or so obvious is that a lot of these apps that the kids are getting into, again, like there's no, like I said before, there's no um age verification, right? It may ask you what your age is to set up your profile, but you don't have to send in a credit card or show them your ID, right? It's just taking it on the child's word, right? They can enter whatever date they want, right? Additionally, uh these other apps like communication apps, social media and live streaming, there's there's really no way as a parent to limit the the content or filter the content that's coming in there, right? Their friends can say whatever they want to say when they send them text messages, right? If they're live streaming and somebody wants to say something that you don't approve of or expose your child to some some type of language that you don't approve of, there's really no way that you can stop it. Alright, so this is a another example of an app that you might find on a child's phone. It would look and feel and act just like a traditional calculator app would, most likely one that came pre-installed on the device. However, this one differs from that type of calculator app in that um when you type in a certain code, it will open up to a secret environment where a child could hide pictures, could hide videos, could hide an entire applications, right? Anything that you could put on the phone can be hidden in here, right? And if you as a parent go to check it and you type in here five plus five, it's gonna say ten and it's gonna work exactly like a calculator would. So for this reason, uh there are settings on both Android devices and Apple devices that will allow you to require the child to get permission before they can install an application. I would one hundred percent recommend that every parent have those features enabled on their child's devices. It does a couple of things. One, it will allow you to track what your child has on their phone. But two, and I would say probably more importantly, it it brings up an opportunity for the parent to have a discussion with their child about what they're gonna be doing on the app, who they're gonna be talking with, how does the app work, right? It it kind of creates a discussion point um for you for you and your child. Additionally, an additional recommend recommendation that I would have would be to install that app on your own device. Because when you when it's up, when time comes for you to go check it, you're gonna need to know how to use it, right? Also, you're gonna if you're using it, maybe you're a friend with your own child on the app. It allows you the opportunity to see what types of content is being filtered through that application, right? And maybe you can make a decision later on whether or not this is the type of exposure that you want for your own child. So kids have been coming up with jargon and lingo for a long time that their parents don't understand, probably since the dawn of time. But now in the digital age, we're talking with emojis, right? So kids are sending these different emojis to each other that kind of have this uh sexual undertone to them. You can see from the items that I have displayed here on the screen. I've got some more here where they've kind of strung them together to create like sentences. These are all things that the kids are gonna come up with, right? This is obviously not an all-inclusive list. This is gonna change constantly. Kids are gonna come up with new stuff. They're gonna stop using certain types of codes and language to communicate with each other. But my recommendation here is going to be to check what your children are are sending and how they're communicating with each other periodically. I'm not saying to that you need to be a helicopter parent, because that's a buzzword nowadays, but um I would definitely recommend just checking checking in on them occasionally. And if you see something or if you happen to see a string of emojis come across your child's phone, right, don't just brush it off as like, oh, they're just being a silly twelve-year-old or they're being being a silly eight-year-old and sending a bunch of emojis, because kids do that too as well, right? Maybe maybe reach for your own phone and look it up and Google it and see what uh see what they're actually saying to each other. Right, so kind of shifting gears, we uh we come into a topic that's been uh being discussed for a long time, right? A long time now, and that's bullying, specifically cyberbullying. And this is kind of going back to what I said before. One of those topics that we really need to reflect on how things are different now than um than what they were when we were kids, right? Because we've all dealt with bullies uh growing up. But the difference here is that these kids are sometimes dealing with these bullies on their devices from the time they wake up in the morning until the time they go they go to bed at night, right? It doesn't just end when they leave school or when they leave the playground like it did for us, right? It's it's just this constant raidment. So it's important that we understand these differences as well as is the the fact that this spreads a lot faster into a larger a a larger group of people, right? Alright, um so one of the the best ways to prevent a child from being exposed to cyberbullying is to make sure that they're not engaging in it themselves, right? Because obviously, if somebody is going to engage in it, it's gonna come back to them uh and then it's gonna be this bout, right? So that's kind of what we want to avoid. But when we think about it, right, the number my number one tip for keeping your child from being active in uh cyberbullying is to set a good example, right? Our kids look at us and they watch us and they see what we do constantly. When we think they're not looking, they're watching, right? They're picking that stuff up, they're soaking it in like sponges, right? So this is actually uh something that I captured from my own Facebook uh neighborhood Facebook page, right? And while this isn't the most egregious thing that you could say uh on social media, I did have to keep it clean for presentation purposes, right? Think about what would your child think? What would a child think if they saw their parent post one of these replies, right? Or what would they think if they even saw you, you know, put a laughing emoji or a thumbs up emoji on it, right? We may be sending the wrong message, okay? So an important thing to note is is to do a little bit of self-reflection when it comes to to cyberbullying and try and try and kill it at an adult level and then hope it'll it should trickle down um to our children as well by setting that good example. Sexting is another big issue that we've been seeing in schools. It's pretty predominant in high schools nowadays nowadays, as you can see by the stats that are shown on the screen. About one in seven kids uh is believed to have sent a sexting message by the time they graduate high school and about one in four has at least received it. But what I I will say is that the studies that these statistics were based off of are quite old now. So I would imagine that these numbers um are are much higher. So if there's anybody that doesn't know what sexting is, um it is the sending or posting of nude and that can be partially nude, um photos as well, all that is included um into sexting, right? So actually, coming back to this, it it's not just um I want to make sure that we point out that it's not just teenagers, right? It's that they get the most attention or the most spotlight when it comes to sexting, but it's not just these teenagers, right? We're seeing in the sheriff's office, we're seeing prepubescent children engaged in sexting, sending nude images of of themselves to friends and people they don't know on the internet, right? And I'd like to be able to answer the question of why, but I really can't answer it with certainty, right? I can make some assumptions. My best guess would be that they're seeing it from peers, uh they're picking it up from uh things that celebrities are saying, maybe their older siblings, um but it's all they're also picking it up from their parents, right? So think about this, right? Sending nudes is becoming ever more popular in our society amongst adults, right? So if a child is seeing that, right? And then the parent is giving the child the phone and allowed to sit in the other room for hours or sit in the backseat on a long car ride playing with the phone, right? What is the child seeing on that device, right? Because that's the same device that the adult was taking the nudes on and sending them to their significant other or or whoever they want they wanted to send it to, right? Or even just taking it, right? Even if they didn't send it, the child now sees that their parents are taking these nude photos of themselves and it makes it okay for the child, right? So consequences of sexting, um kids don't really think about consequences all the time, but I I know that the school does have uh some social media policies in place generally um to prohibit things like this. It's also against the law, so if it's reported to the police, um we will get involved. But again, kids don't really think about this stuff. I I think the biggest deterrent for kids is knowing that if they get involved in sexting and they send the wrong image, it could reach that image that they sent could reach the level of what the Florida State statute refers to as child pornography, right? And if it reaches that level, we take the phone, right? Because now there's contraband uh contraband images on it and we have to seize it and do a a formal investigation on it, right? To make matters worse, they may not get that phone back, right? If there's if there's contraband on it and we can't wipe it, uh we can't get rid of it, um we may have to just destroy it, right? So I I think that's probably the biggest threat that we could throw out to kids and teenagers nowadays is that if you send these messages out, there's a potential that you're not gonna get this phone back. So live streaming is something that's a little bit more um a little bit newer, I guess, um but it's still been around for a while. But uh obviously, it's just the the streaming of live content. And the biggest risk here is that we don't have the ability to to filter out what's gonna be sent, right? It's live. So somebody may be on an on an app, um like I've got some up here like Twitch, for example, is is for live streaming gameplay, right? So it's it's geared not necessarily for kids, but a lot of kids are on Twitch because it's about video games, right? And now somebody may say something and get banned from Twitch for saying something inappropriate, but your kids already heard it, right? Once the person's been banned, kids have already heard what they what they had to say. Other others like uh Omegle, um they they just so Omegle, I don't want to go too far off in a tangent on Omegle because I could talk about that for for an hour. But um Omegle is essentially a website that pairs two random people together, right? You click talk and it's gonna pick one random person and then you and you're gonna only know each other as strangers, right? You can do it as a video or you can do it as text. But uh we're we're seeing things like um people trading child pornography, people soliciting kids for sexual content on here. They'll screen record that stuff, uh which I'll show you here a little bit more in just a second. Other apps like LiveMe actually allow the the person live streaming to obtain some sort of monetary um like gifts from people who are watching them for their content, right? So you can imagine if somebody says, hey, I'll give you twenty bucks, right? If you do this on TV, right, on your live stream channel, what's the child gonna do, right? So that's part of this enticement that we're gonna talk about here momentarily. So this is some examples of of things that's uh people are doing on these live stream apps. And this when I say people, I'm talking about predators now, talking about people who are actively going and seeking out children for sexual content. So this individual uh had created a screen capture of something that he convinced a child to do and is now sharing it with uh with other people, right? And this is obviously where we get involved and we start running child pornography cases, right? Here, there's a portion of this where he's talking about the adults don't do it for him on a on just normal porn sites. You can get that anywhere he likes to see the kids on LiveMe, right? Something else that that these predators are doing is they're going to these um lives, they're creating these live streams or injecting themselves into somebody else's livestream with their genitalia exposed, right? Or masturbating or do something doing something else sexual, right? So going back to Omegle, that's something that happens occasionally as well is when you click that button and say chat, you don't know what's gonna pop up on the other screen, right? Sometimes, just like this gentleman here, was showing videos of himself masturbating just for sport, right? Just to react, watch the reaction of the child, right? So what kind of impact is that gonna have on our child's development as they're growing up, right? So kind of progressing down the um the road of risks, uh these predators, they use tactics, right? They're gonna try to gain the trust of a child. So they're gonna they're really good sometimes at finding vulnerable children and playing off their emotions, right? Because we all know that children aren't really great at controlling their emotions, right? That's part of growing up. But when a predator finds somebody that's vulnerable or a child that's vulnerable, uh they're gonna try and capitalize on that. And they may send them gifts, right? We've seen um people send gift cards. We've seen people uh send phones. We just had a case not long ago where a guy was buying uh this girl, this teenage girl, uh like virtual reality headsets. We I've even heard of cases where people who never knew the child, who never met the child in real life, had sent them a thousand-dollar phone um just to try and gain this person or this child's trust, right? And once they gain their trust and their trust can um that level of trust outweighs the trust that they have with their own parents or guardians, right? Then they've got them, right? And they can convince them to do something like take a nude photo. Or maybe if it's not even that bad, maybe it's just something in their underwear, right? But once they've once they've made that first mistake, right? Then they can use that mistake as leverage, right? We were just talking about it, there's there's nu- numerous cases where children have been extorted later for sex more sexual content, right? Under the threat of, hey, I'm gonna send this one picture out to your school. I'm gonna send this out to your sports team. I'm gonna send it to your mom. I'm gonna send it to your little brother, post it on your social media sites, whatever it may be. Most of the time, they're looking for additional sexual content, right? So if the child then tries to fix this problem by themselves because they don't have somebody to talk to or they don't feel like they have somebody that's gonna listen to them without getting upset, then they're gonna try and fix the problem themselves, right? So this type of of activity is called sextortion. And really, the only way that we can stop it is to be able to have those open lines of communication with our kids so that we can be like, hey, like I understand you made this mistake, but we need to we need to do damage control now, right? We need to pump the brakes, right? Don't try and solve this problem by just continuing to send them stuff. Right, so now we're gonna kind of get into the 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 bottom of that list that I that we started off with and talk about kind of worst-case scenario, right? If it progresses to a point where uh the child is sending additional content to the to the predator, they may at some point say, hey, I'm gonna send an Uber to your house. Get in the get in the Uber, right? If you don't, I'm gonna send all of these photos out to everyone and they're gonna be on the internet forever, right? So the child may get in that car, right? It's happened. So then that's when children get involved in sex trafficking, okay? So here is some human trafficking reports and specifically, uh this is from 2020, the number of tips that NICMCC received um in regards to child sex trafficking. I'm not talking about sex trafficking of adults. I'm only talking about children here. There were seventeen thousand reports in 2020. That increased by about two hundred in 2021, um and then almost by two thousand uh in 2022, right? So this is a problem along with the other things that we've talked about um that is growing, right? It's not something that is stagnant, it's something that's becoming more prevalent. This this is showing that not only is this an issue that's on the rise, but it's showing that it's an issue that kids are talking to people that they don't know on the internet, right? Kids should not be talking to people that they haven't met in real life on the internet, right? Ninety-eight percent of these sex trafficking reports are coming from the kids communicating with people who they never met before. So the big question again, right? What can we do about this, right? I I can't stress enough that the most important things we can do is just talk to our kids, right? Give them somebody that they can come to, that they can turn to, that it isn't gonna blow up, right? Have some sort of predefined action, right? So if you want them to to behave a certain way on the internet, have a preset consequence. Look, if you do this, this is what I expect of you. If this doesn't happen, then this is gonna happen, right? And then when they do make mistake, like, okay, this is what I'm gonna do when somebody sends my child a sex messaging uh image and they show it to me, right? This is the reaction that I'm gonna have. Have that pre-planned out, because what we want to avoid is an overreaction, right? And to that's gonna mitigate future communications with our children, okay? We want to keep those uh lines of communication open and have that conversation um, you know, preemptively and frequently. Again, another thing that we can do is help them set up good uh internet safety techniques, right? Make sure their passwords are set, like make sure that they're protect protecting their own privacy. Make sure that like they don't need to put their name and their email address when they're twelve years old, right? Those types of things are gonna create good practices and gonna help them make better choices in the future. So again, we don't want to respond by overreacting because it's gonna like we could freak them out, right? And then we that's something that we want to avoid, right? The internet is a tool and it can be a good tool, but we need to establish those boundaries and give them the the tools that they need to be able to um make good choices on the internet, right? If something does happen and we need and we need to report it, right? Report it with them, right? Go through those steps to report the actions together. So as far as resources go, uh I lean pretty heavily on NICMCC. It's where a lot of these slides came from. Netsmart.org is a great resource for kids and parents alike. You're gonna find things like tip sheets and videos. It's good for just about any age group on there. Even with even with the the presentations that they have, they have like presenters guides and that kind of stuff that that can really guide somebody through giving uh presentations to children and adults. But I would say this, even though there's a lot of online resources out there, I think other parents are probably your best resource, right? So um you may, somebody may recommend uh maybe Life360 uh is an app that you can download and put on your kid's phone. Somebody somebody from your child sports team might recommend that to you. They're gonna be able to show you how to use that app, right? They're gonna be able to tell you what the benefits are uh from the experience of a real person, not just what you read about on Google, right? That can be a little bit more valuable. So I would say look towards um like again, your sports groups, uh school groups, church groups, even like community Facebook groups for your neighborhood groups, stuff like that where a lot of parents um communicate. Look to those places for resources for for trying to find um the like new uh or keep up on on current events and find new apps and stuff that's gonna help you out. Uh another resource uh that's actually really good for the summer break that uh is about to come up is the Netsmart Kids. It's a kids' version, it's um geared for kids ages five to ten. And there's games and videos and stuff that they can do that they can do and interact with. It's gonna help instill those um uh those good internet safety uh practices. So coming back to the reporting aspect of it, I do think it's important that everybody knows how to report something when their child is exposed to something that they don't want. And there's several ways to do that, right? One is generally through the app, right? If if your child's using Snapchat, um there's there's a way in Snapchat that you can report to them, right? And most apps have this. Generally, what that's gonna do is it's gonna generate a review by Snapchat. They're gonna look at the what was reported and if it meets the the cri- certain criteria, they'll report it to uh NICMCC, which will generate a cyber tip, which will come to our office if it's in our jurisdiction, right? Another option they have is they can either um call or go online to the cyber tip, right? So you've got one eight hundred, the lost is the cyber tip report line, but you can also create cyber tips from their website. If you create a cyber tip, that's gonna get forwarded down to law enforcement and we're gonna investigate it, right? Or you can report it directly to us, uh and again, we're gonna investigate it. Generally, people like the first two options better because there's a little bit more uh of an anonymous aspect to it. Generally, people like the first two options better because there's a little bit more uh of an anonymous aspect to it. Then there would be just making a formal police report, right? But the end result is gonna be the same, it's gonna come to us and we're gonna follow up. If you know a child that has already posted some inappropriate content on the internet, it could be a real uphill battle trying to get that stuff back, right? Trying to get these social media sites to take this stuff down, especially with some, uh because some of them are overseas. Um it can be very difficult. Fairly recently, uh Nick Mc started a new program called Take It Down. Um so if you go to this website, go to their Take It Down website, um they can help you with and provide some information about what uh steps to take next. Uh and they can start, and their service will actually start the process of trying to reach out to those uh those websites and get them to pull that content out. That's really all I have for you guys. I really appreciate you guys inviting me here and letting me talk to you and take up some of your time. But I try to keep it fairly brief, so hopefully you guys got something out of it.
Yeah, let's go ahead.
Um well, first off, thank you um for being here and thank you to Board Member Kearney for recommending this item. Um questions um from you all, any thoughts? Or members' thoughts?
Well, just, is this presentation available for groups in the community that might be interested in having a presentation like this? Or is that, is it limited?
So as of right now, um I provided this uh a similar training, a longer version to both um parent groups uh as well as different age groups of children. Um so it it is available, uh and I'm working actually with the school board to to try and um provide a a presentation to parents at one of the uh upcoming parent academies, so we're working on it.
Vice Chair Pearson, I think that was your question.
I was gonna ask about parent academy, right? Also, uh I feel like I went to something like this about five years ago when my kids were in middle school that actually um Mayor Curry and his wife Molly were very much behind, and it might be Netsmart's.
Okay, um so Netsmart's is put on um by National Center for Missing and Exploited Children, they're the ones who run the site.
Okay.
Um but they do, if you go to their site, there's a resources tab and then a presentations tab where you have access to uh numerous different presentations as well as tip sheets. Um it, they're, they're great like little flyers to send home um with kids. There's a, there's, there's probably more information on um on Nick Mc's website than any, any one person could ever use.
Okay.
Board Member Kearney. Um Detective Walden, can you tell um the rest of the board what it looks like when you come into schools and speak to children? So if you, I know that you've come in and projected to some middle, to some middle schools um in the area. Can you just give us an idea of what that looks like?
Um sure, so I have actually three different presentations um uh for different age groups. Uh it's all pretty much the same content, but it's just altered slightly for maturity level. But it it's, it's very similar to what you would expect uh as far as me giving a presentation to you guys, right? So uh I'm just going to to have a modified version of the PowerPoints that was provided to me by Nick Mc. Uh usually, a school would would contact uh the sheriff's office PIO um and request that we provide them some sort of internet safety training. Uh and then that generally gets forwarded down to me and uh will coordinate with the school administration. And I'll come in, I'll set up kind of like an assembly type deal um and coordinate uh uh technical aspects, like what kind of uh screens and projectors and and things that you have set up, and and we make it work.
Board Member Joyce.
Yeah, I'm um, I'm curious, so through the chair, Dr. Green. Um when a dean or a discipline, you know, when a dean gets a phone from a student and maybe some of this content perhaps is on the phone, school administrators see that. What is the policy? Is it that we handle it in-house, do we have jurisdiction over that? Or do we get J S O involved? So how does that work in our schools?
Through the chair to Board Member Joyce, if it was considered criminal, it would go to school police. And school police would make a decision whether they need J S O involved. I'd be a little concerned that a dean entered into a student's phone. Usually they're locked, do you need a password? So, but let's just pretend they, it just happened to be open to something. Um they would, that would be school police, they would need to contact school police. If if what is there is considered criminal, it, it just, a lot of it has to depend, what is the content?
Sure, well, I know that sometimes when there's an investigation of bullying or something like that, administrators do use phones and they are looking at the content um in the phone to kind of make those determinations. Um and then I would be curious, and and I do know that there are administrators that sort of follow students, high-profile students on social media, sort of see what's going on with what they're doing so they can protect our schools. Um and I'd just be curious to know if there's, there were any um cases that we actually um pulled in J S O of this nature last year? Were there any, I mean, I don't know if you know that off the top of your head, but I would be curious as to what those numbers are, um if we pulled J S O into any of this in our instance.
I always wanted to pick it up.
Oh.
Um, uh for, again, for, I I'm not gonna have those statistics either. I've, if, for stuff like that, I would definitely recommend contacting our PIO. But yeah, I I don't, I wouldn't have those statistics offhand either, I apologize for that.
No worries, I'm just curious. Any other question?
Board Member Kearney.
So thank you for putting the fear of doubt into the balance of social media, and I'm so thankful that my children are adults.
Me too.
Point in time.
God bless you.
But what advice, like this is full of information, but unfortunately, not every parent is going to go to a parent academy or attend something at school. So how do we as a board and people who are in positions to push information out, what are the best ways to help inform parents to make them aware um of what is really happening with social media? Because I do think the cell phone and the internet and the iPad has replaced the the television and in V H S videos at a different time. Uh but the difference is, is that there was a time that things were more controlled and this is not. You're, you're open to things and you're, and you're, and so they're sharing. So what would you recommend for us as far as pushing information out to parents uh to help them get informed and get educated, especially those parents who may not take advantage of an in-person opportunity?
Um, it's a, a great question, and I'm not gonna have a one hundred percent foolproof answer for you. The best thing I could say would just be to keep beating the drum, um talk about it as as frequently as you can. Uh again, maybe send home some um some flyers uh from from Nick Mc, uh from their uh Netsmart's website. Um there, there is really some great information on there that's, that's geared towards building uh relationships between kids and trusted adults. Um that I, I can't stress enough that the number one and absolutely most important thing to to help uh prevent these things from happening or or mitigate the the consequences of them is to have, is to make sure that the child has someone they can talk to, right? So even if it's not a parent, right? Even if they can't trust their parent, if they have a school counselor or a teacher that they can come to and be like, look, I I did this, I'm sorry, and I don't know what to do now, right? But if they don't feel that they have somebody that they can come talk to and 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 admit to their own mistakes without um the fear of of being, you know, suspended or kicked out of school and or made a mockery of in front of their friends, then they're not gonna make those reports. Um uh again, I can't stress that that enough, kids need somebody to that they can come to. Um but as far as just generally pushing out information, um I think this is becoming a a much bigger topic than it has been in the past few years, even though um it it it's been a big deal and it's, I think it's having negative impacts um on on children as a whole within our society. So hopefully, uh you know, some different school districts like you guys will um will start pushing this information out to the parents and and trying to set up the things like the parent academies, um and maybe even pushing the stuff out on on local news media.
I just have one more, one more thing to say, I just, um, I'm sorry, oh, she also.
Go ahead, sorry.
Go ahead, Cindy, go.
Uh, you said parents and I thought P T A, which made me wonder if you've done this presentation with our Duval County Council of P T As?
I have not.
Would you like that contacted?
Um so generally, the way it works is the, is the, they will contact us.
Okay.
So it it's kind of a um a tricky situation, right? Because like I told you at the beginning, I work, uh I do digital forensics on crimes against children, right? That that makes up like every day, all day of my day, right? So I I'm trying to um to do the best I can to to provide as much information I can to as many people as I can. But manage my own workload so that I can continue, the, the state can continue to prosecute these people because they're waiting on my forensic uh examinations a lot of times before they can prosecute cases.
They may be able to use then the parent academy video in their meeting, right? The contents there.
Board Member Kearney, your question's there.
Uh yes, through the chair to the rest of the board, I just, the day that I went and sat with Detective Walden, I just wanna let you know, like it was with, within five seconds or so that that we were doing kind of a test to see how easy it is for a child to engage with a potential predator. Um and it was within five seconds literally that somebody responded on this um, Omeagle was what he was talking about before. Um there was also another example that he showed me of how easy it was for him to morph himself with a free app, to make himself look like a sixteen-year-old girl. And so when they ask you to trade photos, this person can be sending a morphed photo of themselves, they can be an adult, but sending a picture that is them morphed through a free app to make them look like a sixteen-year-old young girl. So these p, these ki, our kids are thinking that they're actually talking to someone their age when they could be potentially speaking to a grown adult.
And to kind of expound upon that, um and and your prior question, the um during my presentations that I provide to schools, I I do demonstrate to the kids how easy it is um for it to be having a conversation with somebody and then, and then be able to produce photos that seem real. Um but in the end, it kind of gets the kids um re-engaged when they, when they see all the the pictures of the kissy-faced girl is is actually me, so.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, well, I I came home and wiped out both of my daughter's phones after I, after I sat with the uh detective, so. It's something that we all need to be very vigilant about, so thank you for doing this today.
Um yeah, and thank you again, um thank you to Board Member Kearney for bringing the topic, um and thank you for taking the time. Um but thank you for the work that you do every day to protect children. Um more importantly, uh presentations are good, but it sounds like the the real work is, um anyway, thank you for that work.
Yes, ma'am.
Um uh other than that, then we will switch to our next topic, and again, we appreciate your time.
All right, thank you guys for having me.
What a, what an incredible group of people. I was talking to them earlier, I had the pleasure about fifteen years ago to kind of work in that space. Uh I've worked with these individuals and it's, the work they do is just, is phenomenal. I remember going into their computer forensic space, and as you walk in there, there was this giant picture of a cat on the wall, right? And that cat had these giant bug eyes under it, it said, some things cannot be unseen. And so this, the work that these guys do is just incredible. And the stuff that they have to sit through and look at and write reports on is just, is absolutely incredible. I remember um going back to to a couple of cases that I worked on here with our own students, um go ahead Tracy, sorry. For example, I remember this uh, this one teenage girl who made the mistake of sending one topless picture to somebody else in school. And then that person repeatedly threatened them that they wanted more pictures, and if they didn't, they were gonna do something weird. What they did was they printed out pictures of that poor girl and put them in everyone's mailbox when they were. That's something that you cannot get past, that's your neighbors, that's the people that you know. Uh but that's really the extent that people will go through um after just sending just one picture, so. Incredible work, um very difficult these days to be a parent with all these things going on, so. All right, so off to our next subject, sorry. I just had to brag on that uh that group a little bit, cause I um I used to so enjoy working with them for years and years. So we're gonna talk a little bit today about three new applications that we're bringing to the district, two of them um I will ask for your approval in the June board meeting. And a lot of this comes from, there's a new state rule out called the uh Education Records Rules. And this rule from the state now states that any application that our students have access to or they're, we are sharing data with, um for example, any of the blended learning options and so forth. We share data with them and they provide us data back, right? So any of those applications that the students are engaged in, we have to ensure, number one, that they're safe. Number two, that they're, they're not spreading um our data outside of the organization. And three, that they're, that they agree to all the privacy policies that the state has put in place now. So really difficult asked for every school to go out and try to find an application that matches all of those things. And then you have to have a written contract in place, so there's all sorts of language that now has to be included in those contracts. And traditionally, schools would sign their own communication contract for things like um Class Dojo and so and so forth. And it really doesn't have, and it doesn't meet the requirements of that new state rule. So what the district asked me to do is to go out and find some applications that we could implement district-wide that would take care of these really needed communication tools for the schools. Then we would have one single thing, right? And then it would meet all the compliance rules, um and we would be good to go. So the first thing I wanna talk about is um is Blooms. And Blooms is basically a communications tool, and this will be available for all um elementary and secondary teachers. So this is what's gonna allow them to communicate with the parents, and they can do it in their native language. Um and that's a big point of this, right? So that, so I can type it in uh in English, and if mine's name is in Spanish, then it's gonna come out in Spanish and it's gonna go in the reverse way, it's going the other way. This looks very much like Class Dojo, if you're familiar with that in elementary school. Um unfortunately, Dojo doesn't meet the state requirements, um and especially doesn't have anything on it that really archives the um communication going back and forth. Blooms does that for us. Bloom is basically for the teachers. Administrators also now have a full view into those communications that are going back and forth, and they can actually put some workflow in there if they'd like. Um it really engages parents, I, Class Dojo is adorable, it really is. I mean, it's an adorable little app, it works great, it allows teachers to talk to um to their parents, uh but it's lacking all the security features that we really need. How do we arrive at Bloom? Well, we got together with a bunch of the principals, the elementary school principals, and we sat down with them and we went through this whole requirements gathering. What do you like, what do you don't like, what are you currently using? And we lay out all the requirements, and then we send it over to our team, the team kind of looks at it and the team kind of decides, number one, do we build it ourselves or do we go buy it, right? Two ways to kind of go. So they kind of looked at this and they compiled all the requirements, and we ended up, there was one application out there that really held everything that the principals needed. So that's how we ended up with uh, we headed up with selecting Blooms. Blooms Connect keeps parents informed with a quick note or a snapshot. So basically allows a teacher to send something out either to the entire class or to an individual um parent about things that are going on. You can also schedule meetings, um offer, you know, volunteer time and so forth, and you can sign up for it to bring items to the school. It allows you to coordinate, keep parents on top of their school calendar and help them participate in various communications, um calendars, reminders, office hours, parent-teacher conferences, all can be done um using this app. You can do two-way private secure messaging, you can also send information about a student's classwork, and you can reinforce positive behavior. So this does have that positive behavior function that you've seen inside of Class Dojo. We are only purchasing that for the elementary school students, we're not doing that um for, we're not doing that for secondary. So once we receive uh board approval, we're gonna start the district's implementation. And that means when we're done with this, it's gonna be one single sign-on, parent application, everything's gonna be rostered. The, 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 all the teacher has to do basically is run this, run this application, and everything's gonna be done for them. So you know, you all know how I am about things, I don't want everyone to be, everyone the same, you know? Rostered, single sign-on, parent app, make it easy for the teacher, one hundred percent. So we'll be doing some training and pushing this out, it doesn't have to go out fast, we have already sent out notices. We have already sent out notices to let people know that Class Dojo cannot be used next year. So that's one of the things of the under- I know to understand about this is the district is gonna fund this. The district is gonna implement this. If you want to have communication between teachers and your parents, then this is the application you're gonna use. And that's the big reason is archive. It's something that we don't currently have, but this app this application will give us is seven years of archiving. So that way, for whatever reason, let's say a teacher leaves, right now, we don't have access to that data. Because it really was the teacher's account. In this situation, our security manager will have the ability to get back and pull data back from as far as seven years. Really important piece of this. Pick My Kid, it's the next application we're gonna talk about. I'm sorry? Oh, do you have any questions about Blooms first?
I vice your person.
So if I'm an elementary parent, I now need to be checking Focus and because some information's gonna come from the district through Focus. And but anything from my teacher that I need to know, classroom type stuff is gonna come through Blooms. I'm trying to think about the parent experience of managing multiple apps for one child. If you have multiple children in multiple grade levels, how many apps are we talking about? And how many different streams is information coming in to parents?
Oh, through the chair. So I mean, I agree. That's I mean, it's just one more thing that the parent has to do. But in very many cases, if you have two students that are in different schools, one may be using Remind, one may be using Class Dojo. And with both of those, um you have to create your own account, you have to do all that. The whole idea of this is just it's just your back to your single parent account. So you log on with your parent account, your students are rostered in there. Um I mean, next year, I mean, the reality is there's gonna be several apps. There's gonna be Blooms, Pick My Kid, the bus ridership app that we're currently testing. All that is gonna be different applications, but all tied back to that same parent account, so.
Plus Focus.
Focus, right. Focus is more, you know, pushing out, you know, grades and assignments and stuff like that. It's not a great communications tool.
But when I log on, there I see all these messages that I've missed cause I don't log on that often.
I I think we would like to move to a, you know, to a more centralized platform for receiving messages. I think that's our overall goal.
Okay, cool. Will the district to tag on, will the district be able to send some of the messages that they traditionally send out through Focus? Can they do, can the district also use this, not just the teacher? Can the principal send out through? Can the district send out? So that it would streamline back to your point.
I'm not complaining. I'm just I'm really just trying to think about the practical side of what it feels like from the parent's side since it's a application that parents are expected to use.
You have the unique situation of multiple kids too.
I have had three at three levels.
Yeah.
Three to two two different times, yeah, so.
Board member Hershey.
So Blooms, the way I see it is um we will allow push notifications. So if a teacher messages me, it's gonna it's gonna pop up and give me a notification, right?
Correct.
I never signed into Focus with any of my four children. Um I think it was the a- anyway, um something like this, Blooms for me would be would be better. Um and so I think people have multiple apps on their on their phones now. And to me, the 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 Bloom app is more immediate, right? I mean, it's more I need to get in touch with you or let's communicate or you need to be aware of. And if you have that app, I I love the fact that it um translates. And and someone who is a a teacher who speaks only English can type in something and send it to a parent who speaks Spanish or Portuguese Portuguese or I don't know Arabic, I don't know how many languages it covers. Uh but with the number of languages that we have represented in our schools, I I think it's an exciting, exciting app.
Joyce? Um yeah, so what has been the response um for? I know there's a lot of teachers that love Class Dojo.
I'm aware.
And I'm wondering, you know, this will be the first year that we implement this. How are we gonna do that with Fidelity? Like a- and I like this because you can archive the communication. And I do think that is especially in today's age, being able to archive that is important. What are we gonna do as a district to ensure that these teachers that love Dojo, number one, are moving over to Blooms? And then number two, you said in the secondary level, we won't um the students, we won't do behavior tracking necessarily in the secondary level. And I can tell you, I've seen teachers at the high school level use Dojo to behavior track. Live in class, it pop it up and you know, do positive behavior reinforcement even at the high school level with that. So I'm kinda wondering why we wouldn't uh allow teachers to have access to behavior tracking at that level as well.
So through the chair, this was uh primarily for elementary schools because that's where we really saw the behavior tracking model. I didn't I was not aware that we have many secondary teachers that were using something like Class Dojo for behavior modification. I I will say that I did put as part of this board agenda item, the ability for secondary to add additional features of Bloom. We're buying two features of this. There are multiple different features inside of this system. Um but and we're gonna give give people options to do that. I this this will be in the the overall Blooms will be in the district's budget, right? So won't schools won't be required to pay for it. We're gonna pay for this. Um but if there's individual little pieces that they wanna add, schools can add on those.
Um and then the fidelity part of, you know, moving teachers over from something they're very used to, they're very comfortable with to something new. Normally, when you go to open house, you get that little piece of paper that says this is how we're gonna communicate. Are we gonna just have administrators monitor, like just sort of gently?
It's like a Google Docs moment, the teachers over to something that they don't like change.
They don't. Uh we have been talking about getting rid of Class Dojo for years and every time I bring it up, I'm just amazed by the pushback that I receive from um from our elementary schools. Uh but this is, we're at the point now where we have to move, right? So my my idea is that we're gonna make it as easy as possible for the teachers. We're not gonna make the teachers go set up an account like they have to do in Class Dojo. They're not gonna have to roster all the students into the system. We're gonna do all that for them. So all they have to do, you know, day one is just log into the system, you know, from their desktop. Boom, all their stuff is there and then they can start they can start messaging parents. That is, you know, and everything that we're doing really is the pushing to having a parent account, having your kids associated to you on that parent account and then make sure now you can go into OneView and update your information um to make sure that you're receiving those text messages and so forth from, you know, from the district. So I I think, I know it's a change and I know it's a big change and I know I'm gonna get some, I I mean, some of the ugliest emails I've ever received in my life was we're talking about getting rid of Class Dojo. I mean, you're like, there are some teachers that just love it. And then I so I got the app and I tried it. I said, oh, it's adorable. I mean, this is this is hard, right? And Blooms is not adorable, but it does function, right? And it gives us where we need to be, so.
Board member McCartney.
To the chair, Mr. Kolar, I have two quick questions. Um I noticed the little grid where it says that um Blooms covers like all of these different options. Would a parent, like a room mom per se, be able to go in and create like a signup genius on there? And like it, you know, instead of having it, it's cause this is a covers that like a signup sheet for, you know, say, teacher appreciation or a p- a class party where a room mom could go into Blooms and actually generate that on the parent's side?
I don't know.
Okay, and so I'm just saying that if we're gonna streamline, I mean, that would be great for the parents that are involved in the classroom too to be able to use that to communicate back and forth as well. Um and then the other question I have is, does um Blooms have the capability to be able to point parents back to OneView or Focus from inside of Blooms?
I mean, it you can craft any type of message that you want, so you could include links back to Focus and to the assignments, absolutely.
Okay, so I'm wondering if there's, I mean, if we make that more of a if if it's if it has that capability, it might drive more parents to go back and check Focus or look, you know, if it's a if this is our streamline, this is where you go for all things DCPS, be in communication with your class. I'm just wondering if it has that capability, it might be something worth looking into.
Yeah, absolutely. And I know if you if you're a parent and you log into OneView now, we have a simplified version of Focus that comes up and shows the grades and the assignments. Because sometimes digging into Focus while it's a great tool, from a parent's point of view, isn't always the best looking application, right? So we always try to point back people back to OneView cause that is our central place there as well, so.
Yeah, and as a parent who has Dojo and Remind and signup genius, I this is very intriguing. Thank you. Oh wait, one more question.
One more question, let's hold up on some things that uh Board Member Joyce said. Um I know you said the district's gonna roll it out and the teachers are not supposed to use the the Dojo. However, my question is, what about accountability? Could some teacher say, I'm not u- using this, I'm gonna use my own? Because I think that that is important, that if we're doing this district, why, what is the accountability? And is there a consequence if um I decide as a teacher that I'm gonna do it this way, that's what I like, I'm not gonna use that. And I'm asking that because I think that runs into a problem when we do something at a district level and then there's no accountability if somebody says, I'm not doing that. I don't know if that's a question for you or Dr. Green, but.
Well, to the chair to Board Member Hershey. The principals will have to address, cause Class Dojo does not need state set under state board rule anymore. It has no ability to um uh key the the messages that go back and forth. Um unfortunately, it is very difficult to find out that a teacher is using Class Dojo because it's it's free. You you just go out there and utilize it. So it really will be principals will need to monitor, well, if you're not using um our program, what are you using to communicate with your parents? And they will have to let them know, I need to counsel you because, one, this this particular instrument, Class Dojo, does not need state board rule. The only bad thing is anybody can go get classed. You don't need, there's no, that's why it's not uh allowed to be used anymore, cause you can't track it. You can't, you can't, it, I could send you a nasty message and get it deleted and no one will know what I sent you or you what you sent me. And that is the reason why we needed to go to a system that, hey, it tracks, it keeps this information. If it's ever needed, you can go back and. But principals will have to be the ones holding teachers accountable of.
Well, I'm gonna just go back to again, what if I don't wanna use it? But I mean, I I think that accountability piece is really um an important thing.
Well, I think it also ties back to their evaluation. There is a piece on uh communication with parents. They're they can hold them accountable. Um but I'm just saying, oh, I have Blooms up back there in the you know, I got Class Dojo going. But it it will be, the principal will need to, um if the expectation is we're using Blooms, then when you're doing your evaluations and you're talking about parent teacher communication, you should be able to see Blooms being used. And if you can't see Blooms being used, then you need to ask that teacher, well, what are you using? And why aren't you using Blooms? Blooms does the same thing that Class Dojo um does, yet it has even more accountability. So one, when parents tell you, you didn't say this to them, you can go back to Blooms and say, pull it up. Yes, I did. I did tell you there was a test on whatever day or I did tell you. Teachers need to see how this protects them. Um we get a lot of CS, nobody never told me my child was getting ready to be retained. Well, y- yes, we did. Here here it is. Here is the support. So it really is working with principals, making sure they are um working with their teachers, how this benefits their teachers and this isn't about harming them. But it is in their evaluation where they can be held accountable.
Yeah, I I just thought that we've, but this is an expectation, not an option. And and I think accountability and making people know that it could be or is tied to evaluation, I think is really important. I think there are good things that the district does. But then you have some schools and principals or and or some teachers within a school who don't follow those um policies or those procedures step forth by the district and then we get into trouble, right? And so I just, I I think you made a really good point.
The other thing is 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 how you roll it out. Um it's gonna be vital, how the principals, you know, it's gonna be very positive. It's gonna, this is gonna cover you. Um it's and it's really gonna have, it's gonna have to be stressed. And it's it's really gonna have to, gonna have to be how they roll it out. Because there are teachers that are, they'll go rogue.
You know, I got, that's 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 my concern.
I think there's is a real selling point to work with teachers and a schools with very engaged parents. There is a real selling point to the notion of it is going to protect you when that parent comes back and said you never said. And that can happen a year later. But I also think for parents, back to uh vice your person's point, the principals are gonna have to say for parents with multiple children in our district, we need to streamline for ease of communication with that family that has the three children at elementary, middle and high school level or whatever. I mean, it's it's gonna be that too. I agree with you on accountability, but I think there's a there's a good strong sell to make it a positive um instead of a, you know, anyway, do you wanna? We'll stop again.
I will say, through the chair.
I agree with accountability, but I think you can sell it on a positive.
I think we can as well. I I think you have to look at it kinda like when we rolled out the electronic grade book. You know, at first, we had some teachers that really adopted it and some people that didn't, right? But then you had you just turned around and it was actually the parents that drove it. They were like, you know, my other classes are using this, why can't you use that? So I think there's some piece of that where they get pressure from the parents and the press- parents themselves can push people in the right direction. Uh one other thing I would like to note, I clocked Class Dojo, their executives for the last two to three years and tried to get them to move to a um to an enterprise level, to do data integration, to do archiving. And they just said it's not in their model, right? Our their model is the is about advertising and then selling additional features to the parents. And that's and that's where they are and they're they're not willing to move, so. Next application, Pick My Kid. It's basically what it is, right? So this is a dismissal app um that we're gonna use next year. So it's centrally managed, um real-time reports, let schools and teachers account and communicate every student's whereabouts at any time. It's more access to built-in safety features, no expensive hardware. Some of the other systems use some very expensive and elaborate hardware for for basically for parents to notify the school that they're there to pick up their student. Everything from uh cameras that screen uh their their license plate number to fobs and all this other stuff. So this this really is 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 a mobile app that's really designed to allow an elementary school parent to let the school know that they're arriving on campus to pick up their students. Basically, car ridership. So it's um schools have a dismissal dashboard, um they have universal communication and there's a pickup designated by certain individuals. So you have, it goes once again, parent app, parent login, your students are there, hit a button. You have to be in a geo-fenced area, so you can't be twenty miles down the road saying, I'm here to pick my student up. Right? You have to be in the area, um and then let the school know that you're ready to be picked up. You can also do transportation changes. So for example, the student is not law- in the bus today, is gonna go instead of be a car rider today. You can notify the school that there's been some changes um to that using the Pick My Kid. Oh, there's the geo-fence area. I thought that was really kinda neat that you could actually punch it in and say, hey, you're not in the area. You're not even close to the school yet. Nice try. So Pick My Kid is is already used in several of our elementary schools already. Um but once again, we are going to centralize this. We're going to do a data integration with them. We're gonna do a single sign-on functionality with them and we're gonna uh basically pay to push this out to all of the elementary schools. It does come with uh district onboarding, once once again, you gotta get this rolled out, make it easy for for our schools. Um there's training and there's actually year-round support uh by phone for our parents. Any questions about Pick My Kid?
Who said just elementary? What about, is it just elementary? Is that what I heard?
It is just elementary.
What about our middle schools that have? What about our middle schools that have significant ridership that haven't been worked into it?
So once again, we're gonna make an option for middle schools and high schools to be able to purchase that at this reduced cost as well. There's also some really interesting features that they have, um, that high school, um, Scott Schneider was talking about, was really interested in. They have a digital hall pass, which basically the teacher goes on and then puts into the digital hall pass where the student is going, right? So if you see that kid in the hallway, you know exactly where they're supposed to go. It also tells you how many times that student, like, okay, he went to the bathroom every single class period this, you know, this, today, you know? So, so that's nice. It also has the ability to say that there are certain students that shouldn't be in the hallways at the same time. So it has the ability to, to do that. So that's an extra feature that once again, Pick My Kid, um, will be available for the secondary schools if they wanna purchase it. We'll roster it, we'll do all the stuff that we normally do, um, and it's a very, it's actually a very small thing.
Just something to think about, um, that Bill, and I don't, I can get the number for you, you probably know it, but there's, um, a House bill that passed that I assume will be signed, um, into law that, um, will limit students' use of cell phones at school. So I was thinking about, I went, I had students at the high user, um, one of the middle schools.
Highly engaged.
Highly engaged. My kids did not have cell phones, um, in, in middle school, but they, two of them had a device that didn't have service, so they could use the school wifi. And I would text and say, I'm in this parking lot, you need to ride home with this person. So I was thinking, uh, parents kinda handle this stuff on their own in middle school, except that if the students aren't allowed to have their cell phones or use their cell phones at school, however that law is gonna be applied, that's gonna cut off a lot of parent-to-student communication that I think middle school people have been relying on of just, I can let my child know, ride the bus, don't ride the bus, I'll, you know, walk home, don't walk home, I'm in this lot, I'm not, walk to this, whatever. We're all gonna have to get used to this new law of, uh, and I'm talking about on the parent's side for, for sure, on how much we're able to communicate with our kids during the school day. So just throwing that out there.
Through the chair, I don't disagree that, that we may look at next year expanding this out fully to, to secondary. Um, right now, we're just trying to resolve the issue with the elementary schools. That's primarily where we saw, we didn't see a lot of secondary's, um, schools that were using anything like that. Uh, but it does have some cool features, like, um, I, this year had the pleasure, um, when we were sent out to help at schools, to work at the front office for a couple of days at a high school. And I could not believe the amount of time and effort it takes just to get a kid out of class because they're going to a doctor's appointment. I mean, it was, it was like, like this is horrible, I mean, what you have to go through. So some, some schools may opt to do something like this where the parent notifies the school that I'm picking up my kid at three o'clock today to go to a dentist's appointment and they know that. You know, teacher gets informed, front office gets informed, student's there, they just come in here, click and, and they're done. So I think there's some real benefits to this.
Okay, Board Member Joyce, although I'm having visions of you in the classroom and some child saying, I'd like to, no, you went five times yesterday and three times this morning with the same girl and y'all been meeting in the hallway. You would've had way too much fun with him, of course. You are in my class right now, thank you very much, but you were gonna ask, I'm sorry, it was just a funny visual.
Um, I love that.
It's obvious.
Well, I mean, I just think we really need to let the principals know this is an option. Um, that's awesome. Um, my question was, in the Pick My Kid central management, it says real-time reports, let schools and teachers account for and communicate every student's whereabouts at any time. How does that happen? Does a student have to have a cellphone to know that?
It's really about knowing that you're, that, what, what, what the system does is that if you get into the car and you get into the car with dad, right? The system then clicks you off and tells you, mom, that your son has gotten in the car with dad. So that's what they're talking about, to be able to notify you where your student is all the time.
Oh, 'cause I was envisioning like, oh lord, my child's in the principal's office again.
Oh, no.
Oh, lord, yeah, um.
No, 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 no.
For being, for being out of class on hall pass ten times.
Lit, literally, oh, they're on the playground right now, so, I mean.
No, nothing like that.
Okay.
It's gonna change a lot, Mr. Anderson.
We're gonna have lots of options next year for student ridership and everything else, it should be fun, right? App Parent. So this is something that we're actually rolling out, it goes live today. This is not something that, uh, I have to take to the board, um, and we've already implemented this. So basically, what this solution does is it allows a parent to see and control what their student is doing on a district-issued laptop after normal school hours. That's what it does. So I, as a parent, I have a parent account, I have a, a student associated with my account. That kid at night logs on to one of our district-issued laptops, that I'm notified as a parent and my lovely child is on their computer. It allows you to have control over what that student is doing.
I'm sorry, is there a kill switch from my side?
Yes, there is.
Okay.
You can shut the machine down, you can tell them it's dinner time, you can do multiple things with the student laptops. This is gonna be for all secondary students?
Mr. Koller, you've made two parent board members very happy in this moment.
But it's only district issued.
District issued devices, only district issued.
And that's fine, that's all we have. You don't buy the laptop until college, so.
There you go. So this is for secondary only, we're not purchasing this for elementary school primarily because elementary school students don't generally take laptops home with them, so. But for all secondary students, the company says on average, about ten percent of the parents will participate. So that's kind of, uh, an interesting number, but that's kinda where we're at. So part of the app, once again, it's another app, right? Now, you have four apps, five apps, just to do with school. Um, so you have a schedule, so basically you can tell that's, when, when the student can actually utilize the laptop. So if you decide that nine o'clock is the time it goes off, then at nine o'clock, things go off. You can schedule screen recording with Timelapse. So this means that anytime the student is on the machine, it'll actually record the screen. And you can go through it and actually see what the student was doing during those time periods. Or you can have it set up to take snapshots occasionally and send those to you, right? Very frightening for a middle school child, I'd say. You can also, um, the district does run, um, a filter and actually, in June, I'm bringing to y'all the new content filter that we're gonna be deploying, um, primarily, um, to combat some of this stuff going on at home with our machines. But this allows you even further restrict websites on that. So if you have a parent decide that, okay, well, the district says you can use YouTube, but I don't want you to, you can cut that off. You can also do Instagram, Facebook, all those other things. Much of the, much of the applications that were brought up by the officers today are not allowed on our network, are not allowed to access to our students. Now, are the students smart and savvy and figure out ways to get around that? You know, especially middle schoolers, they have, you know, time and a motivation level that's, that's difficult to, uh, combat. So this is just one more way that a parent can go in and see and take, and take notice of what their students are doing with those machines. All right. Question, Vice Chair Pearson.
Thank you for all your research and work and responsiveness to issues. I know I've brought some of these up, so thank you. I have a, I wanna go back to Blooms, I was gonna wait for the whole presentation to, um, make sure it wasn't covered. So on Blooms, um, are we anticipating that club sponsors and coaches will also be on Blooms? Because that wouldn't be a class roster, it'd be more like a team roster or a club. So I'm just saying, I have multiple ways that I get information, um, because this coach will use Remind or Game Changer and this one will use, you know, this club sponsor and have really active kids, I guess. So, eh, we're getting information in a lot of ways. And I, they need to know if they're all gonna be restricted to Blooms, because that's a, you know, a good choice. Or if the club sponsors and coaches are still gonna have the flexibility to use whatever. And then if they have a team parent who sets up Game Changer for the team, so they can follow us. Because Game Changer gives you the ability to follow, live-stream a game, like to follow a game. So I think we just need to talk on the high school level for sure, but also the middle school. We really need to think about our extracurriculars and how we're gonna treat this and what the pros and cons are if we're gonna put everybody on Blooms versus some other products that are out there and, and what those may give to parents if Blooms can do that.
So through the chair, I mean, our, our plan is to say that if it's, if you are a district employee and this is the tool that you'll have to use, and if there was some, um, everybody with it, that has a district account will be able to log in, right? So that, that should be fine. People that are outside, I, we're just, I mean, we're gonna have to work through those. I mean, those, those are gonna be issues that we're gonna have to work through on year one. But I think, once again, I think the parents are gonna push, just like yourself, to say, I would like to have one place to get all this information, not, not twelve.
Yeah, I'm just thinking specifically, having been a baseball mom, the, I think it's Game Changer, that a lot, I know a lot of parents will start watching a game or following the game on their way from work. And then they get to the field and, or one parent, I, I just think that's gonna be a tough one for baseball parents.
I agree.
Um, and I'm not sure about other sports. I don't think I've had it with other sports, but I can see that being a sticking point with baseball parents or softball.
That's, that's a board, can we make the request that maybe you meet with Ms. Tally to see what all the different, she's pretty into, I mean, and see what she sees you all to be able to do with the current, with what we're headed to and what the gaps are. That way you know the gaps for the coming year and can start looking to see how do we keep consolidating all in a space that's going to retain all this command in light of recent events. It'd be nice to be retaining everything, even if it's extracurriculars as well, so.
I agree.
Um, so maybe to talk with Ms. Tally and, yeah, and see, because she would know all the different ones. Let me come to Board Member Jones, had a follow-up from that. Okay, Vice Chair Pearson, I'm sorry.
The issue of teen, a lot of coaches will give communications to a team parent to handle. And so, um, Board Member Carney asked about if a PTA mom or parent could set up a signup genius for teacher appreciation or something like that. Um, similar issue with snack schedule for cross-country or, um, communication. I've done that for wrestling and other sports. So we need to make sure that parents could still help coaches and take that load off of coaches if the coaches don't want it. So that would be another part of that.
I'm gonna have to go back and ask.
Okay.
That, that, I mean, there is a, I know a simple solution, a principal can create a sponsored account for the PTA. That does often happen, that gives them the access to the app and to be able to set things up. So schools will have the ability to group certain students that aren't automatically rostered to somebody because they're not in Focus, they, they will have the ability to do that.
Okay. Board Member Joyce, you were gonna.
Uh, yeah, on the, um, the last app that you, what is it, App Parent?
App Parent.
Um, the web, web filtering, uh, page indicates that a parent can, uh, turn off something like YouTube. Um, is there any scenario where the teacher would say, I want you to be able to access YouTube? Um, but then the parent has turned that off, does that create a conflict between what the teacher wants the student to do and the parent's turned that app off?
Through the chair, I mean, when you're at home, the expectation so much is the parent supplying the internet access. So they would have the ability, for example, if they wanted to go into Comcast's system and turn off certain websites, it certainly could. But no, a teacher would not be able to override what a parent has selected, um, after hours, after school hours.
Okay, so this wouldn't apply to during school hours?
Not at all.
Okay.
Goes off during school hours, parents have no control over the app.
Okay.
But the parent could turn it on and off if, if the child comes to them and says, my teacher said. I mean, I wanna just ask the obvious question so that we do the flip side. I mean, the parent can manually turn it on and off, I'm gonna leave it on for the next hour and then I'm turning it back off. Um, all right, other questions? Vice Chair Pearson?
We do have another sports-related one, sorry. Um, but we do have homeschool students who play, um, on teams or, and I think with this, another new law that's coming through, um, charter and private school students who don't have sports have opportunities to play if they make a team. Um, so we would wanna make sure that if we're running all communications through Blooms, that we account for non-DCPS students or families who are on, um, on, on our teams, so that they don't lose communication from the coach.
So through the chair, if the, if the charter school is using Focus, which most of them do, we do create an account for the student.
Okay.
Not often used, but the account is created. Same thing with the teacher account, so, but I don't know how we're gonna do licensing and so forth. I think licensing will be fine because if the communication is coming from our teacher going out to, to them. But once again, if they're rostered into, to something, then they'll be part of the, they'll be part of the roster.
What if they're a homeschool student?
If they're rostered into a class for the county, then they would be part of the rostering going.
But they're a homeschool student who, who only swims for a school or only plays baseball for a school, they're not?
Yeah, swimming's not really rostered inside of Focus, it's something, I think they would just have to be manually added.
Okay.
Homeschool students, if they're registered with our homeschool department, would have an identity. I was gonna say, they would have an ID. Both the groups you're talking about, charter and homeschooler, are, already have ID numbers.
Okay.
Yeah, cool. Or if they're registered properly, they, they do, so.
Okay.
I'm sure it'll be perfect they won.
I, I will say, I, I think Vice Chair Pearson, Vice Chair Pearson's point of just centralizing all this communication is, is huge and I agree with you. I think parents are gonna drive that to happen, but it's also gonna drive you to have to have the features, um, to, to make it all happen, so. Other questions, anything else? Well, thank you for your presentation.
So App Parents available today. If you log on as a parent and you go into OneView and you go into My Links, it's right there, you click on it, sign up and. Thank you all very much.
Doctor Green, did you have anything else to add on these two topics? All right. Well, we have covered our two topics today, internet safety for children through the KSO and their technology updates. Uh, the Dubal County School Board, uh, will move to adjourn this meeting, I'll ask for a motion.
Second?
Uh, a motion by Vice Chair Pearson and a second by, uh, Board Member Carney. All those in favor, signal by saying yay.
Yay.
Any opposed? By unanimous vote, the meeting is now adjourned, thank you. Yeah, just as a reminder, um, the board office will be asked.